You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Look who's here.
Recording in progress.
Well, we'll open the meeting now that you're here.
My pleasure.
My delight.
Nice to see you. Like you look.
Yes, there you go.
Mr. Secretary.
Oh, God bless you. Mr. Tyler, my chair.
Good, you?
You opened the meeting?
I've opened the meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October 18th. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 18th. Those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we approve the non-public meeting minutes of October 18th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes of October 18th. Any additions, deletions? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye. What happened? How big a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any additions, deletions?
Any queries?
Yeah, just curious. What if we don't approve item E?
Could be subject to fines if they proceed with their event.
It's tomorrow.
It's another one where we found it and did some outreach, so.
Good. Good job.
Help hopefully with their promotion.
So the meeting has been made. Seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion we approve the unsealing of non-public meeting minutes as listed.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the listed non-public meeting minutes of 2013.
I think we were all nervous that you were going to try to read that list.
Yeah.
Probably take longer than just one of the maybe minutes.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pablo Kim, point. Okay. Hearing none. Other than nobody's online. Good.
Yet.
Well, it's too bad. Okay, Kevin, you're on.
Thanks, Kevin.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
So I guess we're here to discuss the budget?
Emergency management budget?
Yes.
Which took you several hours to compile?
Yes. Jerry Google.
Make sure for Jackson, the microphone's got here on camera.
Okay. I've got my good side.
Basically, the primary change is how we're posting Kevin's time versus when Joe and Pam were doing the position. Pam was just posting her time to health officer because it was kind of a fine line, especially during the pandemic, what was emergency management and health officer work. And then when Joe was doing it, it was just a portion of his salary was getting posted there, a portion of his compensation was getting posted there. So Kevin, we're doing it basically based on five hours a week. Some weeks going to be more, some weeks going to be less. So that's the change to the payroll line. And that's a little bit higher, but it's mainly offset by, we've had the rave system for a few years, the version of Code Red, really with social media and internet and getting word out on the radio, really just haven't got a lot of traction with raving, just feeling for the cost. It's not worth it, so. We're hoping to get rid of that. For that offsets the cost for whopping $50 increase from last year.
Where are we looking, Michael?
So it's on page two, I guess.
Nope.
Three, three of nine.
Yeah, there's probably, but I don't see this. Oh, right there. Is extra contingency enough? 250 bucks. It's right below that. We spent 453,000 dollars.
I would say no, I'd never move you.
Well, hopefully we're working.
Not under your watch, right? Yeah, it's really just a placeholder, obviously.
Any questions?
Thanks, Kevin.
I'll see you soon. You're welcome.
Got a visit to the EOC plan in a couple of weeks. Pam's saying great.
November 8th. See what's there. Appreciate it. Now I'm going to several conferences all in the same day, the 16th of November, all the way to emergency management. State.
In Concord?
Yes.
Great.
Manchester. So yeah, we're trying to get into it. Then on FEMA's website, yes, the job description, there's numerous courses and classes there to take. So I'm making my way through that. Accomplished some, several of them, but there's a number of them there.
Is there more that we could do to publicize the use of Wickham Hall as an emergency station during events?
Well, I guess we can maybe put something on the website that's a potential shelter or something like that.
Hasn't really been used as a shelter because we don't really have any cons or.
Lows or.
More of a warming.
Yeah, okay.
Warming charging station. But yeah, we could look at doing that.
How many people usually take advantage of it?
We had a couple one time, but usually not many, if any, right? Pam's usually the one in staffs, and so she could speak better to that. I think during one of the ice storms, I think, that we had, a couple that was here for a good part of the day.
Can you place them somewhere? People like to come by and ask questions.
Yeah, so we can work on getting a little more general info that that, you know, is open periodically as a warming.
Information center.
Information center.
Good. Pam? Same way as well. This one is a little bit on page five and then a little bit on page six.
Looks like you're doing a little better with your time.
Yep.
Taking it.
The only change to my budget was we bumped up the water test by $100. There's bacteria in the lake. It requires retesting, and then we have the floods and whatnot, so. Seems wise to go up a little bit, plus testing the water after the backhouse, the drinking water.
So is that just in the spring when you open it?
I tested it. I don't remember what month I tested it, but beginning in May, I will test it.
For the beach?
Yes, right. Not the beach, but the drinking water.
At the beach, they do monthly.
All right.
Not really budget related, but I can't say enough about how great Pam was during the flooding, sort of a communication person and what she was able to put together with the water tests. And EAI for folks to test their wells was really great, so thank her a lot for that.
And the EAI.
And EAI.
They offer residents tests at a discount. Quite a lot of them took advantage of it.
Did anybody besides me at this table not know about that? Actually, I might be the only one on well besides Beverly.
Anyone.
We always trust the North Swansea Wire, so.
That's right.
Anyone who thought their well may have been impacted by the floods, EAI was offering bacteria water tests at a discounted rate.
We knew you were outside the zone, so we didn't have to worry about. They moved over by Northeast Gulf footwear, if you're looking for your tests. Good location.
A little more visibility. It's a really tough budget, Pam.
I know. I can explain all this. I'll try.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Guess we can zero out the DPW's not here that they're finding.
I know. You'd be happy to do a lot less work. Do you want to jump to D then? Oh, actually, should we do the board of health meeting? Forgot the other assignment, yeah.
Do that?
Yeah, let's do that. Come back. Ken had it already. We'll see something.
Something's on my. He doesn't like to monopolize the conversation.
So I'm required annually to report to you and come up with a readiness report. It is pretty much unchanged for the last two years. Housing, property maintenance, and communication is still what I face rather than issues. Just hoping some of the housing would be alleviated by the multi-apartment dwellings, but they aren't ready to be occupied yet, so that is still an issue.
Sounds like next week for the first.
That's what I heard. Whether, how much is going to help our residents in this town? I don't know yet. Percent of Swansea residents are renting. Property maintenance, hoarding, that's still an issue. We do now have the quality assurance policy that you all approved back in April, so we can apply that to subsidize renting, ensure that they're living in adequate housing. And as far as communication, I am using still all these same methods that I've been using since COVID, and so far it's working pretty darn well. Facebook seems to be one of the best places to communicate with people. Any type of social media. Is there any questions?
I wanted to ask about item number two. It's in your list of three health threats?
Yeah.
Just curious, what's the intent of guidance that is clear and concise? What is the meaning of that? And then the definitions that are not subjective? What's meant by both of those?
Just because you don't like the looks of someone's yard doesn't mean it's a nuisance.
Or a junkyard isn't necessarily a statutory junkyard.
Right. If you have junk in the yard, it's not a junkyard. Just people view things differently. So it's easier if you have something really that's clear and concise. And we're hoping that with that quality assurance policy, it would be more clear if we did an inspection, what we were looking for.
So who provides, or what provides the guidance? Is it coming from you? Is it coming from a policy?
We have an inspection checklist of things that we look at. Fire department looks at some things and we look at other things. Like, and we have our housing guidance for town Swansea.
But it's, so is it clear and concise, or does it?
I think it's better. It's getting better. I think it's better than it was.
So what do we need to do to keep it improving?
I think. I think the more we apply the policy, the more we use the tools we have, the better it'll get. You know, the more apartments that come under scrutiny for the rentals, for the conditions, I think it'll keep getting better.
So one of the policies that they have in Keene, and I wonder if we could adopt that, or Keene State, if, I should say, Keene State College. If Keene State College has students renting in facilities, multifamilies, they're required to go through an annual inspection process.
Right, right.
So if we've got people that we're paying, we're paying their rent, do we have that ability as well to inspect the units?
We can.
Are we?
I don't recall the exact.
Enforcement, yeah. I believe once we've done it, once we've paid for a rent, even more than once, we're supposed to, unless we're familiar with the condition of the property. Like, Mike spent in that one last year. That one's in okay shape, don't necessarily, aren't necessarily obligated, but yeah, normally, I think it's after the second month is how we had word of it.
Yeah.
It's becoming more than just a one time, you know, just pay the rent once. Becoming more recurring, I believe is what the policy calls it. And that was just adopted earlier this year.
But I do think it's a good idea annually if they're there for more than a year to go back and inspect it.
I'm wondering if, even if they're not there for a year, if we have, if we're paying, it seems to me it should be more, if we're paying a year and 12 months out of the year, whether it's the same people or different people.
Right.
We're still the ones that are paying the.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, at least annually, if you're using the same place over and over.
And then with regard to definitions that are not subjective, are we working on that, or is that a staple and we need to work on it?
I'm not, I'm not sure, because what you view in someone's yard as a mess, someone else may not think it's a mess, so it's more subjective. It's who's viewing it and how they think.
On the positive side, we've got a real clear comparable with the people that bought, I don't know what address it is on Pine Street, but it's a house on the left. What they've done in two months is literally remarkable.
Yeah.
And it's just transformed that tremendously. I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to sit down with people like Scott Self and Steve Diddle, who pushed back hard when we tried to implement an ordinance item, three or four, it was like, it was pre-COVID, and they pushed back on it deliberately, and it got removed, to enlist their support, not support, but input into that very description or whether we shouldn't bother with it at all.
Well, it might be a good idea. Hoarding is definitely an issue. Whether it rises to the level of a nuisance isn't always true, but it's not nice to look at.
And the other would be, just with junkyards in general, how many do we have in town?
Licensed?
Licensed.
One.
So what about the other ones? The one with, what's that address? DA Brothers, it's not their property, but.
Yeah, kids don't know.
They must have.
How much that's considered a junkyard and so much, I mean, it's cleaned up actually, but there are some.
I'm not talking about DA Brothers, yeah, I'm talking about the one to the south. With the chair that it was. There's got to be 30 vehicles there.
Yeah, but there are three or four different businesses, I think.
Junkie versus junkyard.
Yeah, junkie versus, junkie yard versus.
Well, we have a policy that you can have two unregistered vehicles on a property. There's got to be, there's got to be 30 of them.
I think it's residents, though. Isn't it? I don't know. Like, a business would stick to that. I mean, if it's an auto repair business, like, so.
For dealership, I don't.
This is none of those.
Yeah, I think they work on garbage service. I don't know. There's been.
There's trees growing up through all. It's going to take a lot of work.
Keep some from floating away in the next flood.
That's true.
Well, I'm not familiar with it.
There is a positive to it.
You want to send me some information, I can go over and look.
Well, I think with your priorities there as far as housing and then the hoarding, I think the hoarding's kind of being taken care of by the housing.
Yeah.
Because people don't usually get in that situation unless they're financially strapped also, and then when it becomes more equitable, the get rid of the property, then somebody comes in and cleans it up nicely and sells it.
Hoarding on private properties is very difficult to handle. Had to take care of a couple, not always very successfully, but just keep trying.
I think the junkyards, I take your point, but I think that's a little bit more outside of Pam's lane, too. She's happy to help.
Yeah. We did address quite a few problems a few years ago, and we cited the non-legal allowed on private property, unlicensed and unregistered.
There has been some issues with one refuse company that didn't have enough employees to do its contracted routes. So on the Facebook community page, I saw a lot of things about that, that people had garbage piling up. It's kind of a health issue.
It's a health issue.
Yeah. I don't recall that, but yeah.
But I mean, there's things like that that happen in this economy. We've got to keep that.
Just one quick one. So how many meetings did the BOA have this past year? And then, which was not, and then if none, the next meeting is fall of '24, is that?
That's this.
It's this?
You collectively are the board of.
Yeah, this is our first meeting this year. Yeah, we are the board.
What, we didn't have one last year?
This is, yeah, they want to know this year, and this is the 2023 report. So this is our first meeting. So when I wrote the report, we hadn't had the meeting yet.
So the '24 is a typo.
We will say we had a meeting this fall, and then the next one will be next fall.
Right. But we could have more meetings.
Yes.
If something came up, we would have more meetings.
You're doing a hell of a job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Good.
Joe Wery dispatched your budget, and they zeroed it out because you weren't here to defend it. Said he'd be happy to get a lot less done. So he knows early enough. We start with page one with the cemeteries and parks, I guess. Not a lot of changes here. The main one, which is different from what I sent out last night, is we had gas double budgeted between this budget and public works. So see, there was nothing getting spent here, so we zeroed it out in the cemetery budgets. That one's now down 3% overall.
Is that the driver in the reduction? 3670 reduction?
Yes, that's the bulk of it.
Everything else appears the same, the fertilizer's up just a little bit.
These images on page three, if you want to see what was posted before, which we don't normally budget for, but somewhat relevant, because some of those expenses indirectly might have been the operating budget, like some of the payroll and stuff, so that's why I included it for just kind of spending purposes. But the actual budget stuff for highways starts on page four.
So timing and reimbursement?
It's, they're moving slow. To give an example, the '21 stuff, we just finished this year, and we're actually doing a project right now on Wickham Road, but we finally got the funds from '21. So it's probably a year to two out. I'm hoping, like I explained in the last meeting, that it goes better. The FEMA group they sent last time, a lot of the things were done incorrectly. We had to do it over, but they do, they move slowly, and we had, obviously, the declaration went through and filled out the application, confirmed that they had our application, and now it's just waiting for them.
So how do we cover those costs?
Just out of budget. I believe because declared disaster, yeah, it's basically just, it's a receivable potentially for a year or two, but yeah.
So it goes up against the fund balance?
Yeah, and we would show the potential revenue down the road. I believe it'd be considered receivable against the fund balance.
But all the contractors are paid?
Yeah, all the contractors are paid, and we're just, the only thing left to do is the paving that's going to happen. We'll be clear the end of next week on Don and Pebble. Everything else is pretty much done. The work we're doing right now on Wickham Road is from the 2021 floods. We replaced two real deep culverts with a contractor up there, and the only thing left, like I said, from this flood from this year '23 is just getting those roads paved. All the contractors are paved, and the number's less than I initially anticipated it was going to be, so.
Sure seems lower than.
Yeah. Hope we don't go through that again.
Did you deal with from roads yet? Is that covered?
That's where they are for that, just finishing up. One of them, one of them bolted off.
Everything good?
Yeah, it's real good. They're very, very deep, but coming out really well. But the one culvert that was going to stay, that's not, we're paying for that, that's not going to be FEMA money. Just brought it out on the bottom, so while the road was closed, made sense just to replace it.
And you were able to pave some of, some of all of our hill leading up to it, too?
Yeah, the paving, the paving, the subcontractor that was working for Catch Basin's offered to, we trucked the mix today, and we put a shim down, a new shim down on the older hill road because it was so bad, just a portion of it.
Nice.
See, outside labor rental is down a little bit. That's because the new sidewalk wow has that mowing.
It's a boom mower. That's been working real while. Doing all of our roads fine, and it's kind of nice because there'll be a lot of times where we have a project goal where we don't need the whole crew, and then you have somebody by themselves, so there's only so much you can do, but it's perfectly just, or a rainy day, you put somebody in the mower, so the mower's been going out once or twice a week, and I think it'll be a year-round thing. Obviously, if there's not snow on the road, you can still go out and cut stuff back, but it works very well.
What's, what's the driver for the reduction in salary? It's not significant, but just curious.
I think it's just, just based on how we bumped in the employees, so I'll have to check on that. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a, I'll say a real reduction. I think once we, certainly once we factor in the wage increases, it'll, it'll be up. But I think it's just how, must have been, I'll have to look at what I entered for last year, but we enter in each employee, so maybe I've made a typo on one of those.
Is there one less week this year?
It's leap years. Yeah, it could be. Yeah, it could be. Well, it might have been how we budgeted for the seasonal. We have Paul in here, but remember last year, I think we budgeted for the person that didn't come to fruition. So I bet it's that, that we didn't, we're talking about using an employee from the recycling center. Has some experience with plumbing, so we should put him in there. So I bet that's what it is, you know, good catch.
Are we budgeting enough for tree removal?
We are, we'll raise it up a little bit. We are, I don't think it needs to go anymore. I still have more to do this year, just, I need to finish up the fourth year. As you know, you can drive around town and find problem trees everywhere. So I, I think we're good there.
Doing some this week right over on Matthews Road?
Yeah, we've been doing some, cutting back the brush on Matthews Road, trying to get caught up there. And we're, we're in pretty good shape there. I think moving forward, that shouldn't be enough. We raised it up just a little bit. So the outside labor got, and rental got lowered a little bit. We're looking at lowering it more, but one thing is with all these road projects, we're improving our drainage systems and adding catch basins. It's pretty expensive in the spring to have a catch basin truck come in and clean them, but needs to be done, especially when we have a rough year like last year with rain. So as we start improving, like, we have more catch basins down here on California Street and North Winchester Street. That could potentially be another half a day of cleaning. Not, all, all of them don't have to be done annually, but some of them have to be done annually, so. So that, that was, we were able to lower it, but not, not as much as I initially was going to. Fuel prices are obviously up a little bit. With everything going on, we use a lot of fuel this year. And then obviously the asphalt.
We'll see if the footnotes, we've kind of listed the roads that we're planning to do after the asphalt lines. So it talks about Taft, all of which, the first part of Sapper, Oliver Hill, which I think we did some of, but that wasn't really a full solution. Then the crack ceiling and just kind of a general amount of the budget for the hot box and cold pasture of the year.
The crack ceiling's doing real well. We did quite a bit of that this year and all the asphalt experts will tell you that it's the, it's a, it's a great way to pull on the life of the roads that are starting to crack up. Without doing that, the water gets in and freezes and breaks, small cracks become big keys and such. So everything, the trains that I've done and the experts you talk to, they say crack seal as much as you can. So we've done a rock, like this year, we did Wickham Road. Highland, Hot Island, Hill Hill. There's a handful of roads we did this year, but it was all around that end of town, on the east, east side of town. They were getting up to Goodell today, if not tomorrow.
The vehicle repairs, you feel comfortable with that?
I do, like I, like I discussed with Michael, with that, especially with the heavy equipment, you never know. You could have a breakdown, that's a substantial expense, like a transmission or a motor. But so far, it's been pretty good. The guys are pretty handy. They try to do most stuff they can handle in-house, the bigger stuff we put out. But like I said, knock on wood, I'm fairly comfortable with it, especially if we're starting to replace some of the machinery, starting to become more modern.
So bucket truck doing okay?
It is, we just, with all the flood damage we have and the brush cutting we've been doing has been on the roads that we're, that we're working on. So once things quiet down, we can roll into winter, we'll be back out cutting brush with it again. But it has been working on great. It's a, it's a nice little truck. It gets them up plenty high enough and pretty versatile.
Be good when you fix the cover bridges again.
Yeah, oh yeah, cover bridges and, and what, some painting, painting stuff as well.
Taking the flags down.
Yeah.
Sand, you'll see we're showing a reduction. Might not even end up using the five, but that's mainly, Joe's thinking he's gonna be able to get material off the one ten line street property that we purchased.
So that could, that could potentially eliminate the road sand for a few years. That's another project that I'd like to get going on this winter, if everything goes well, we can cut the trees off and strip the topsoil and salvage a lot of sand in there. Because it's just basically gonna make the grade of DVW parking lot expand further and back. So we'll be level in doing that, gonna be able to use a lot of that sand.
You still have some stockpiled from next to the Marlins?
We do, yeah, we do. Probably gonna buy a little bit more to be safe, but we do have some leftover from last year. That was really good. If we had space, I would have taken more, but there was only so many places you could put it.
Yeah.
But the same thing, the Gordon Company will truck us the sand for, truck it to us for essentially a dollar, I think a dollar more a yard than we were paying to haul it and load it ourselves, so.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, they've been, they've been very good to the town.
Couple of these miscellaneous budgets, too. One thing, just to mention on streetlights, which I haven't talked to Joe about, but especially some of these areas where we've extended the sidewalks, might be good. Still have some of the streetlights that we have, when we did the LED switch over. Look at maybe extending the streetlights where the sidewalks don't have, South Winchester we extended. So just not anything on proposal doing right now, but just something to think about.
No, no, we do have a meeting, we stayed next year about planning to expand the sidewalk the other way on thirty-two.
Yeah, meeting, meeting with them next, next week, right?
Yes.
There's nothing else? We can jump back one more time to page seven, which is the sewer fund budget. You guys are fortunate enough to be the sewer commissioners now, so.
We had a lot of discussion on that, too, because obviously it's new without, without employees and without the, now using the contractor. The contractor's working very well, but some of the challenges are going to be, remember DES recently for their annual inspection? And DES is telling you that EPA is, the permit's just gonna keep changing and more and more requirements are gonna be made. EPA does not like lagoon systems, DES likes them. They realize they are a somewhat affordable option for towns, but they cautioned us that they're just gonna keep making more requirements, that you're gonna have to test for more or you're gonna have to treat stuff. I don't have an update, the, the mechanical function of the pilot program they installed, it's working great, but they don't have results yet. They just have the baseline, it takes a while for it to get treated all through the lagoons. The operators are pretty optimistic that it's gonna, going to help our situation. Well, part of our permit this year, the newest permit, you have to have a maintenance plan for your collection system. And we're gonna be meeting shortly, coming up with that, but that's gonna be an added expense because there hasn't been a lot of inspections of the collect, collection system. There hasn't been a lot of cleaning of the inspection system. So we are potentially looking at some more annual expenses. I think if I remember correctly, a fifth of the system has to be done a year per DES. So we're meeting with the sewer operator coming up here shortly in November. We're gonna create this plan to be in compliance with the permit and then look at some, what similar costs are going to be. Some of it, like I said, it's, it's a good idea. I've been talking with Keen, it's a good idea. They looked at our north system as part of their consideration for taking over the pump stations and they, they gave positive feedback on what they saw out there, which we kind of knew, it's all SDR pipe, it's all pretty modern. But there does, definitely needs to be a scheduled inspection, some camera work and then some, some cleaning of lines. So there may be some expenses that pop up in there. But, but overall, it's been going pretty well. They still say, DES still says, too, and if it ever comes to fruition, I know Keen asked us about it, if it grants that years down the road, the way to go, maybe tying West Swansea into North Swansea and going at the key. Because the lagoons are gonna, A, the plant's gonna need substantial improvements, which are very expensive, and just gonna be, each time that permit gets renewed, it's two or three, is it two or three years?
Yeah, three or five.
They said just, they're just gonna keep making more and more requirements. Got, got DES who's kind of warned that if there are grant options and the town is interested, that would be the way to go.
That maintenance plan being part of the asset management grant, the engineer could put together or something?
Yeah.
Just something the operator could.
I think we can, with the operator, I think we can put it together without having engineering expense because it's, it's pretty, it lays out the requirements in the plan. The, one of the family members from the company, the operator, they're doing this for municipalities for forty-some odd years. So he's, he's pretty confident. I asked if they thought we would need some engineering, they're pretty confident that they could meet all the requirements of the plant. But you bring up the asset management program, it's a good thing we did that because part of the new requirement, all of the van holes, everything has to be numbered in, in, so we're in maps. So it's basically, we're ahead of the game to be able to show them that what this is done, so. I just checked, obviously, that we're still in the fucking stage of the G M. Each, each, they already have every one of them numbered and identified, so DES was rather happy to hear that.
Do we know how many people are on public sewer that are on wells as opposed to the brown water system?
I don't have an accurate number, but there are quite a few.
Michelle should be able to.
Yeah, Michelle should be easily popped up because we're, the reason why I say that is because we're only reading probably twenty, twenty, twenty-five meters, I'm guessing, because I've gone, before Scott left, I went and identified the meters. So it's only a small portion that, that are metered.
Just want to touch.
So I can get that, I can get that number, but it is, the majority of them are not metered.
How, how are we coming with the rate evaluation regarding other communities?
So we're, we're communicating with the state, with DES told us, and there's, there's some potential for funding for them to do that. They say you don't wanna do your rates based on just what other towns are doing. You wanna have a analysis done of your needs, your system, and that's, basically do a rate study. And the individual, DES was pretty optimistic that there were some funding options out there to help with that study so the, so the rates can be set for Swansea's needs, not just randomly what other towns are doing. So we are communicating with them.
What would the timetable be for that? And what's our, what would we have for a policy for updating rates? Is it annually, specific time?
It's never been updated.
They've, yeah, they, they've never, there's no record of it at all, so.
Well, it was set probably in two thousand and five as far as the north.
For north.
Yeah, so, but that's all, something that would be done with the study. We have them communicating with the state. I'm actually waiting to hear back because I wanna get that process going and see if, if there is some funding available with grants to have that done. I think, and we need to communicate with DES more, but I think we would be safe to, our connection fees, I think we'd be safe to set without having a rate study done. Because they definitely, we don't need to be updated. I'm in the process of still, like I said, updating, creating an excavation permit process for bonding and so forth to go in the streets that will coincide with connections with the, with the sewer. That is all stuff that really needs to be, be updated. But we were, we collected a bunch of data from towns and DES, so we'll pump the brakes on that. You don't, you don't wanna do that, you wanna do it based on Swansea's needs.
Sure. Do we know what we have for reserve over here, capital reserve?
Dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's both the dollars in the capital reserve and there's also the sewer fund. Sewer fund has its own basically fund balance, so that's more substantial.
And from your conversations with regard to the challenges coming from the, at the federal level, what, what do you think, if you can, project what the time would be where we really have to consider the connection from here up there?
So like, so we just got the new permit, which I believe is good for three years, not two. And it's gonna be big, at that point in time, when new requirements come out, we're gonna be seeing what we have to treat for and, and what we have to test for. But I would, from talking with him, is because within the next ten years, it's gonna get difficult.
So should we be working proactively on that?
Yes, and we have, and Keen expressed that there was a lot of regional opportunities and we should circle back with them on a couple of things, but they asked if we were interested. They said that there was a lot of grant info out there, especially when dealing with regionalization. Absolutely. Larry Crowe and I ran some rough numbers, looking at probably five million to tie sewer in if you want up Eaton Road and went past the school in that direction. But the upgrades to the plant could come close to that type of money. Sooner or later, it's going to need it. So I think, like I said, we can circle back with Keen a little bit more and be more proactive about the, about the grants. And then obviously explore it. Obviously, we have a lot of reserve in, in what we pay for, for what we own with the Keen plant. But we'd have to look at, look at that as well, as far as the flows.
It's just too bad we didn't look at that before we redid Eaton Road. Wouldn't have timed it out well anyway.
It's gonna be, it's gonna need to be repaid by the time we're done.
Yeah, 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 so your roads right now, you know, they're pulling so many chemicals out of, out of the liquid asphalt and the asphalt's what's getting used last. I never realized, a lot of cosmetic projects are pulled from crude oil. But basically, they're pulling so much out of it now that asphalt years ago was so much better than it is now because of what, all the byproducts. But you basically, if you have a road that's constructed properly, if you get ten years out of it without doing some type of overlay to it, you're, you're doing good. And these roads that you shim and overlay that are in rough shape, you're not gonna get ten years out of them.
So north just has one capital reserve, which has about three hundred and forty-two thousand. And west has one for extensions, which has eighty-nine thousand line extensions. And then just a general capital reserve with two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Really just spent the money there on South Winchester and Double Hill, right? That was the last project, I think, up by Dollar General?
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that was the last line extension that I can think of. On this one, the main, at least in west, the main budget change is due to chemicals. Basically, that's how they're treating. And especially depending on what the pilot program right now for phosphorus comes up with, could go either way, could get more expensive or could get less expensive. Obviously, that's what we're hoping for, but more than that, we're hoping for a successful pilot program, maybe if it does cost more, get them those.
Yeah, the, one of the concerns, not concerns, but one of the things they say to be cautious about is it could create an issue with aluminum where they have to do something there. It's too soon to tell. If it does, if it does work, we'll continue treating this way. We're gonna have to do some, the cold storage room, we're gonna have to insulate. And I think the freeze point of the chemical they use is like forty degrees. So we're gonna have to insulate it and do some type of heat in a containment area for the tank. But something that our crew can help with, winter project, getting insulated. We're not gonna go do that unless we realize that this is going to work. But they are, they are pretty confident that it will. And one of the big increases with the asphalt, too, is once again, not knowing where crude oil is going, but the paving company basically says a placeholder. We're paying right now, I think, our hundred and ten, all states doing their paving this year for a hundred and ten dollars a ton and they said basically next year that be safe, you better, you better call for a hundred and twenty-five. Let's hope it comes in lower, but.
How much longer are they gonna run?
It's usually second week of November. Fred Alders are making me a little nervous. I think part of the reason why they bid, I'm assuming this, they bid Swansea, work pretty low because we're pretty forgiving with them, letting them come later in the year because the plant's right here. So like, they can't pave and double it when it's cool because by the time the mix gets there, but we're right here. So we're pretty easygoing with them and with that, their bid always comes in considerably lower than the others. But if the ground freezes, you're done. That's the, that's the thing that worries me. If you get two, three inches of frost, you're done. So, but if, if it's forty degrees out and they're putting down base coat, asphalt's a non-issue. If it's not on, if it's not on frozen ground. But if it does get, want it getting cold like that, then we would, we'd just top coat it next year, put down the binder and top coat it next year. But because the weather next week, I see some twenty degrees at night, so we can get everything paved. And you'll see the parking lot down here, we just pour up and the old asphalt getting degraded, they're gonna pave that as well.
Coby Park is almost complete.
What were you taking out over there? Was it just rocks, debris from the store or something at the park?
There were some blocks, there were some blocks buried in the one corner where the basketball court's going to be.
Yeah.
And I had them put conduit, there's electric, there's electrical conduit in the ground on the west side of our lot, just for future, ever wanted electricity over there, we put a conduit in the ground, going underneath the road, the gravel out there, if you ever want to do something with electricity, at least we have it here, because the conduit comes from the mill telephone pole across the road.
Yeah.
It just, that ends on the side of the parking lot entrance, so we ran it across the entrance, so if you ever want electricity over there, it'd be easy enough to do.
Good idea.
Yeah, the side of the step they made, come out real nice, we, we overseeded the grass, the grass started becoming better, but one of the challenges is no water down there to water it, so, but it does look pretty good right now. Fire department knew we overseeded, it went down, fire trucked a couple times and watered it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still got room on your plate for that emergency management, that could come back for you?
If something big happens, I'll be there. It's all the updating and M O U's and with the schools, and I just don't, they're too much on, but if there's a big incident, I'll be there for it. Is that sound?
Looks like we hope you're not there.
Yeah, that's exactly, we hope to go through that.
Stay in Kevin's capable hands.
Exactly, so I told Kevin, I said, don't worry, you can, you can work on that stuff, if something happens, I'll help you. Let's hope something doesn't happen.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mike.
Good job.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How everybody doing?
Everybody good. Typical spring day, we're trying to go.
Yeah, we're nice.
That's all week. Got your costume ready for the block party?
Mm-hmm.
Frankenstein. Frankenstein or it's monster?
Yeah, I guess it's monster. Monster, I haven't had a name. We go over this one time.
So this one starts on page one, about two-thirds of the way down, at the ambulance service budget, so I'll base that based on Chester EMS, we got one rate for the first half of twenty twenty-four, and then different rate for the second half, because we set in the contract on July first, and then I rounded up a little bit to sixty thousand, basically to keep it level. So that's the explanation for how we came up with that number. Then the fire department budget starts a little bit lower down on that page, and it goes into the next page. On the part-time on-call wages, we didn't pay too much attention to what's going on between those, and you'll see it kind of washes out, but basically just trying to put more stuff into that F D wages, call training, which is breaking out, so we've broken out the day a week for the assistant chief, but otherwise putting most of the stuff either into the on-call line for the on-call stipends, which I think used to be the weekend shifts, if you're wondering why, it looks like we spent like money on that in twenty-two, and the on-call thing didn't exist, I think that's because it used to be the on-call, it used to be the weekend stipend, so we're just trying to, I think, hopefully simplify a little bit, so when you see a big reduction and a big increase, you'll see it actually is down a little bit, but more or less even so. Not a lot of drastic increases, you know, thousand, two thousand, five, here or there, which we can speak to any of those if they're of interest. Well, then we didn't talk about, not to put you on the spot, but non-disposable medical equipment, probably going to be by less than that with our current operational situation, don't you think? It's like two-thirds of the way down.
Yep, yeah, non-disposable. Yeah, what, you want to do stuff?
I think we probably can, right? We're not doing much analysts, right?
No. No, it actually, we talked about combining those two lines right into one.
The non-disposable and disposable?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, well, there's still some, you know, equipment we would need.
Yeah, some, I'm not saying zero totally, but we cut it down to like three thousand or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Or, case something needs to be replaced. We're still talking about moderners, right?
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah, still be.
That's not a capital.
Usually, but yeah, maybe if you just need to buy a couple parts or something.
Yeah.
Under tires, it says ambulance will have all tires replaced, is that just a holdover from last year?
Yeah, see, it says in twenty, in, more in twenty-three, so yeah, that's from, that's last year's comment. Yeah, we'll get that out there. You can either carry them all over or none of them, so I tried to pick through the ones that weren't rolling anymore, but probably just a few more.
Yeah, we did the tire size too.
Were their tires replaced though?
On the ambulance here.
Doesn't show it from my reading.
I'm sorry?
Saying it doesn't show it, but from my reading. The twenty twenty-three activity?
Is that in twenty-two or twenty-three, or a lot of times the tire bill, it's.
Twenty-two, we did a little time.
Very good at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So then there's no activity this year? Where there's no.
Only just replace tires on utility.
A lot, most departments, I think, usually wait until later in the year to make sure they haven't had a transmission blow or something, or they work out of their stockpile a lot of times, you guys have tires hidden away, so you probably.
Yeah, tire, we're going to do another water before winter, so probably.
Yeah, we could be looking at DPW, same thing, tires, everyone's spent six thirty-one, but I think they're planning on doing like the loader or something, so I'm off the loader, so we'll get rid of that, but usually something that waits until later in the year.
With the internet, is that, which is over budget now, is that minimal increase going to be adequate?
I think it should be pretty close anyway.
Oh, you're forty-seven hundred with three months to go.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at cell phones, mobile internet.
Yeah, they've been a little increased that for next year.
Yeah, but I don't think, make those rain, I don't think it's enough. We'll look at that one again, but yeah, maybe bump it up to fifty-five hundred.
Michael, look, I think we're only closer to six or sixty-five. You're averaging fifteen hundred a quarter.
Sixteen hundred.
See, good thing we saved that money on the medical equipment.
Yeah.
If not, should the default be contractual obligation, which is the new rate?
I think that's one, because I don't think we had a, for it to be considered a contractual obligation, we'd had to have a law article that look at sixty percent threshold that binded us to their contract, so I don't think we normally put the new rate in the. We don't get the budget, we have to find the money for the difference somewhere else.
Find the obligated tool.
Especially to find out third of the way through the year, now I know you're right. I believe it's just an estimate rate, you know.
Yeah, we got the policy.
Actually, no, did he give that to you? Did Cassie, would it have been Cassie? I feel like they actually did get back to us on that. Was it in Wonderville or something?
Yeah, Wonderville. Well, she, did she stand up for the estimate for the rate?
Oh, yeah, this is last year. Yeah, I think it's just an estimate at this point.
You may have covered it, I may have missed it, but with suppliers, was that part of the budget?
I was talking about the non-disposable metal, medical equipment, again, about medical supplies or down for a lot of the overall supplies.
Part of the supplies.
I think a lot of that was, I don't know, I was going to say it would have been the addition stuff, I think that should have been on the bill, so, are you talking about the expenditures, or, I know last year a lot of it was stuff we bought at the end of the year. Trying to number a little up that the board approved.
And this is what we're looking at twenty-two, is that full year?
Yes.
So, say you had twenty-one there, and you got almost twelve through the end of September. Is it, because, is it, we, we know we need four thousand dollars worth of supplies, but if we have money left in the budget, we buy some others, become necessary as the year goes on, so that we don't fund it initially.
He's asking you.
Oh, I thought he was asking you.
Just a general, just curious how.
I'm going to look at what we spent on it, but I think in terms of how it's.
So the supplies?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, all the supplies, paper, toilet tissue, paper towels, so that, that day-to-day stuff that's required to, for the three stations, so.
I don't know, something else in there to get to twenty-one thousand and eleven thousand.
Yeah, that was, I believe we used that a lot of this year for addition.
That's what I was thinking, but I think that would be, well, maybe some of the, like the cabinets and, what was the other thing that you bought?
Cabinets, same.
Coat racks, right?
All the racks we used from that, I don't know where you got that from.
Just a general part of my question, isn't it, in other words, it appears that there's, there's enough money in the overall budget to cover these expenses, so that line item doesn't have to move, it can just be a modest increase, and then if there's things that are needed, there'll, there'll be money elsewhere in the budget to recover for, that's really all I was.
You must make sure you have, have enough money, basically, to keep going over, it doesn't have to be higher.
Right, yeah, I, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Now that you've got that resolved, I'm getting into the reports, I can tell you what we spent it on. Yeah, there's no one big thing, a couple things that you want, that because.
Yeah, the cabinet.
Cabs.
Cabs, in the workbench.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was a lot of like, wasn't quite the building project.
No, it's not, it's, it's, some of that might have been, some of it with the labor. We worked fixtures and the same.
Watch, you got over two things from industrial protection services. But then compressor, or the.
Yeah, that would be, we used compressor at the cell station, but, you know, that was a bar ten.
Between, between maybe a ten or twelve.
Yes, that's twenty-one.
I think it's just been no wire, so I think it's good.
Under that, the prior year encumbrances, is that the ladder drop?
Yes, I believe so, yep. The engine, I think it was the engine.
Right. Yeah, ladder, ladder was number four, just before I got here. Yeah, and if they come out with a raise, it's never not, where is the one?
Look at that.
Thank you. How's that?
Good hangout.
Yes.
Yep.
Want to go outside?
No, no, you're fine. Just say, stuff coming up.
Like the November meetings.
We'll not be meeting night before Thanksgiving again, are we?
No.
They have.
But, no, the malls are rented, at least on Thanksgiving.
Put somewhere heated.
Good point. The schedule sound okay? First day, brief agenda of fifteen, no meeting on the twenty-second, and then regular meeting on the twenty-nine?
Sounds good.
Go.
That's fine.
You putting it in your calendar, Bill?
Yep. Change to our prudent.
Our share of the next invoice from the city of Keene for our share of the improvements to North Swansea, or the Keene system, Keene wastewater treatment plant in North Swansea, so we're looking for thirty-nine thousand, six oh nine and twenty-one cents from the North Sewer Pond Capital Center.
Make that motion, Beverly.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Aye.
Brownfield Design and Planning, get that project kind of going, we interviewed underwater engineers, Stevens and Associates, and Gale, and all three had different strengths and weaknesses, but we felt Stevens and Associates was the top selection, they had a lot of the different sub consultants, landscape architects, and different components in-house versus having to sub it out, so we thought they kind of had the best overall package. They are most local, they're closest. We met with them over Zoom to set up the scope of work, and they developed the proposal that we've included here. I had in my mind twenty-five thousand, so it was a little bit higher, but I think it's fairly reasonable, we talked about having kind of an initial public meeting where people can a little more pie in the sky, get all of the ideas out there, take that feedback back, identify a few options, and have another public meeting, kind of narrow it down, get to a selection point. So I think they, they have a good team, and I'd be asking that we authorize expenditure of up to thirty-five thousand, six hundred from the invest in each per unit grant for brownfield improvements with Stevens and Associates.
Make that motion, Beverly.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Motion, favor?
Aye. California and North Winchester Street, so the board knows it's been a project in the works for a couple of years now, we had some planning meetings earlier this year with the additional funding that we talked about a little bit, I think, last meeting, I think we're ready to kind of get this back going, so this would be the next phase of design work. We'll be looking for about fifty thousand, which would include some mainly engineering, but also some permitting and easement work if needed, and we'll get a kickoff with DES a meeting, I think, next Friday.
Make that motion, Beverly.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Mr. Favor?
Aye.
So usually, we just have a small amount left over projects, we just kind of cleaned up administratively, but this was a, you know, nice little, nice amount on the South Winchester, Swansea, and West Street project, came in just under nine to two thousand, under the funds approved, so partly to point out that this was a good one that came in, won't necessarily say under budget, but under, under what we had approved, and because it's a sizable amount, feel better with the board officially rescinding it, so I'd be looking for that rescension, so we can put it back to good use at other projects.
Make that motion, Beverly.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Those are fair.
Aye.
Any old business?
Don't have any at this time.
A.
Yes.
Make the motion, we went to non-public session, under A.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to go into non-public, A, those are very rare.
Karadzinski.